Good evening, everyone, and welcome to this regular July meeting of the Olathe Board of Education. Glad you're all here tonight. Welcome to all my colleagues. Special welcome to Dr. Debbie Daniels, who's rejoining the board. Dr. Daniels, welcome back. It's good to have you here. As I call this meeting to order, the first order of business is going to be the Pledge of Allegiance. But first, we need to call the roll. So, Mrs. Carpenter, would you call the roll, please?
Ms. Ashley?
Here.
Mr. Churchman?
Here.
Dr. Daniels?
Here.
Mr. Gilmore?
Here.
Mr. Pollan?
Here.
Mrs. Wilhelm?
And we have a quorum present to conduct our business today. We have some special guests for the Pledge of Allegiance. So, Dr. All, would you introduce our guests, please?
Yes. Sarah and Mary, would you come forward? As we typically do at our regularly scheduled board meetings, we have students to help lead us in the pledge. We actually borrowed these two students tonight from one of our staff members, Merle Hastert. We don't have summer school going on, and our regular school's not in session, so these are two volunteers to be here on a July evening to help lead us in the pledge. And I'm going to tell you a little bit about their biographies after we do the Pledge of Allegiance. So, are you ready? Okay. You can? Ready? All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Girls, you want to come over here? Okay. Now, Sarah is the oldest. That's you. And Sarah's 12 years old, and she's going into seventh grade next year. And I will have to say, these girls go to a neighboring school district. But quality education is all about us. This past year, Sarah was honored in Who's Who's Among Outstanding Students in America due to her academic achievements as well as school and church involvement. She's played soccer for a premier soccer club for the past four years, and she also enjoys basketball, softball, and fishing. And so, I imagine she's having a good time this summer, right? Okay. And then, Mary, who's nine years old, is going into fifth grade next year. And Mary has been the student council president of her school this past year and was a member of the math club and was honored by her school for a poem she wrote to her school's departing principal. Mary enjoys all sports, has played a leading role in music theater, and leaves on Sunday to attend a one-week camp at Campwood in central Kansas. So, these are two honorees and volunteers for doing our pledge today. And would you like to introduce any family members that you might have here?
Yeah. That's our dad.
Dad of Merle.
(laughing).
And so, Mr. Hastert, and he, Mr. Hastert, is business manager in our Business and Finance Department and takes care of a lot of our procurement, purchasing, and many, many other duties. So, we appreciate Merle making arrangements for two of his four, I believe, children to be here tonight. And we thank you, girls, for being here as well. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies, for taking time out of your busy summer to spend with us tonight. We appreciate you being here. Before Dr. All provides an overview of our meeting, I thought I'd depart a little bit from precedents in the past. And we have a new board member tonight and some renewing board members from the last term, and I thought it would be nice, as a matter of ceremony, for us to just do a little swearing-in before we begin our business meeting here. So, Mrs. Carpenter is going to swear us in. For those who have just been elected for their term, would you please stand and raise your right hand?
Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Kansas and faithfully discharge the duties as a member of the Board of Education, Unified School District 233, so help you, God?
I will. I do. All right. Thank you. With that, Dr. All, would you please provide an overview of our agenda tonight?
Beginning tonight, one of the first things I'd like to do is have an introduction of Dr. Marlin Berry. And Dr. Berry is newly joining us as an assistant superintendent. You know, we had an opening with Dr. Hole's departure, and so, this is a replacement position on the administrative team. And Dr. Berry has been superintendent most recently in Abilene, Kansas. He's been on the job for, I think, three out of the four days we've had this week, because we started with, I have it holiday yesterday. So, you know, Marlin, why don't you just share a few words about yourself and where you're living now and how you're getting here?
Well, good evening. And I want to tell you how thrilled I am to be a part of the Olathe School District. I am currently living or sleeping on an air mattress in an empty house in the southern part of our district, but the rest of the family will follow next week. And each day, I'm learning more and more about the district, and I'm just really appreciate the opportunity to be here. My wife and I have two daughters who are both in college, and again, they'll be joining us next week. But thank you, and I look forward to meeting you and getting to know you more.
You're welcome, Dr. Berry. It's good to have you here.
Just so we understand each other, where did they go to school, college?
My youngest is at the University of Kansas.
Wrong answer.
(laughing). Dr. Berry, you'll need to say that into the microphone, please.
Well, the youngest is, will be a sophomore at the University of Kansas, and the oldest just graduated from KU and will be in graduate school at Indiana University.
Welcome aboard.
That's one of those trick questions. You can't win. You can't please everybody on any of those answers. After this introduction, the board will begin its New Year's organizational meeting, and the first item of business will be the election of the President for 2007-08. Following the election of the President, there will be an election of the Vice President for 2007-08 as officers for the board. There are a variety of appointments, including the clerk and treasurer and attorney for 2007-08, that are required to be done at this organizational meeting as well. Following that, we have an action consent agenda. The following items, the items on this agenda represent matters that the board may approve without detailed discussion, and any item on the agenda may be removed for separate discussion as an action item upon request by the superintendent or any board member. And the board has received supporting information on all of these items prior to action on the consent agenda. Following the consent agenda, the board will take action on bids, contracts, and agreements, which will be identified by the board president at that time. And then, other action items include setting the meeting dates, location, and times for the 2007-2008 school year, the appointment of a board representative to the Olathe Public Schools Foundation Board for 2007-08, the appointment of a head start advisory board representative for 2007-08. The board has several future action items listed with information for them that will be requiring action at a later time, not at this meeting. There were a couple of written information items, and then, the board will adjourn to executive session. And the executive session will be to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel to protect privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed, for preliminary discussion related to the acquisition of real property, to protect the public interest in obtaining the property, and to consult with attorney on matters deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship to protect that privilege and the public interest. And following that, there will be a potential action item, and then, we will return, have adjournments. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. All. Our first action item is election of President for 2007 and 2008. We actually have President and Vice President here, one after the other. Is everybody understanding of the process we'll go through, in terms of we'll open the floor for nominations? If there's more than one name nominated, then we'll need a motion to cease nominations, and then, we'll have a roll call vote for who you choose for that office. Makes sense? Okay. With that, we'll open the floor for nominations for the Office of President for 2007-08.
President, I would like to place in nomination Kevin Gilmore to return to the position of President of the Board of Education for the Olathe School District. I have been very pleased and very proud of the way Kevin has handled the position of President of the Board of Education this past year, and he has agreed that he would be willing to serve in that position again, so I would like to place his name in nomination.
Seconded. Thank you. Second is not necessary, but thank you, Mr. Churchman. Are there any other names in nomination for President? We do need a motion, then, to cease nominations.
I would move to cease nominations for President.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you, Mr. Churchman. Mrs. Carpenter.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. -- excuse me. Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Supposed to say the name?
No.
No, this is just a motion to cease nominations. Actually, we don't cease nominations, do we? Betty, have I got that right?
We can.
He did.
That was the vote.
That's all right. We've already got it on the floor. Let's vote on it. I'm not doing good in my reelection here.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes. And that motion carries. So, that was the motion to cease nominations. Now, the motion on the floor will be, someone make a motion to appoint me as President for this next year.
I move that we appoint Kevin Gilmore as President of the Board of Education for 2007-2008.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. I should ask for any further discussion, but I won't. Thank you. Mrs. Carpenter.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
And the motion passes. Thank you very much. I appreciate your confidence, and I'll do my best to lead the board this next year. Now, we move to the Office of Vice President, and the floor will be open for nominations.
Mr. President, I nominate Jim Churchman.
Thank you, Mr. Pollan.
Mr. President, I would like to place a nomination, Ms. Rita Ashley.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Any further nominations? We'll need a motion to cease nominations?
So moved.
Thank you, Dr. Daniels. Is there a second? Is that you, Mr. Pollan? Mrs. Carpenter.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Mr. Churchman.
Ms. Ashley?
Since I was asked, I will agree to serve, so I vote for myself.
And that motion has passed, or that election has passed. Ms. Ashley, congratulations.
Thank you.
Moving on to, on the rest of our agenda, item 1.06. I'm sorry, 1.0. Yeah, that's what I have on here. I've got 1.07 on my screen relating to the various appointments, including the clerk, the treasurer, attorney for 2007-2008. There are a number of items that are listed in our agenda materials. Mrs. Carpenter, are you reflecting that as agenda item 1.07?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Unless there are questions, this is something we could approve as printed?
I would move that we would appoint the clerk, treasurer, and other needed appointments as listed.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Parker and Mr. Churchman. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Motion carries, and those appointments are approved. Next section, 4.01, is our public comments section. At each regular meeting, the board reserves limited time for individuals wishing to address the board. We request that individual speakers limit their comments to five minutes. The clerk will monitor the time and notify the speaker when the five-minute time limit has expired. Please direct your comments to the entire board. If a response is appropriate, the President will respond or refer to another individual. In an effort to respect the privacy, to respect privacy, we ask that speakers refrain from discussing personal complaints involving individual staff members or students. Those speaking are advised that public comments are videotaped recorded for broadcast on the district's educational access channel and audiotape recorded as a matter of public record. Individuals addressing the board should come to the podium at the front of the room directly to my right and state your name and address before you speak. Is there anyone who wishes to address the board in the public comments section tonight? Okay. Seeing none, we'll dispense with public comments. We're now moving on to item five, which is our consent agenda. A number of items are listed there. I will ask if there's any questions pertaining to any one of those items or any comments you wish to make, because we can entertain approving them all as a whole. I will tell you, I believe the financial institutions is on that list, which I would need to abstain from due to a conflict of interest, so we would need to remove that one.
And I would also abstain from that.
Okay. So, we can pull, what item is that? I didn't mark it, Ms. Ashley.
5.08.
We'll pull 5.08 for separate consideration. Is there any other questions on any other remaining items?
I would also request that we pull 5.09, official district newspaper, for further discussion.
So noted.
Gilmore, I just had a comment. Being my first meeting back and my first access to board docs, I was not sure I was getting all the information regarding the curriculum textbooks and instructional materials. I did have some additional questions related to the Odyssey program. I have every confidence in our administrative staff that they have selected appropriate materials, and I do thank them for their last-minute attempts to get me information to review. Thank you very much.
Excuse me, Dr. Daniels, what item is that?
It is 5.06.
Any other questions or comments? Before we move forward, why don't we go ahead and discuss item 5.09, which Ms. Ashley asked about?
We have, as a board, received correspondence from some constituents wondering if possibly it would not be a good idea for us to consider designating alternate newspapers or an alternate newspaper as an official district newspaper. So, I would like to open that up for discussion among the board members. The reason being that our district continues to grow, and it has grown substantially and into neighboring communities that may not necessarily be folks who would, on a regular basis, receive the newspaper that we have designated here as our official district newspaper, the Olathe News. So, I would like to offer up that we would consider perhaps designating a second newspaper also as an official district newspaper. I had a conversation with Dr. All earlier today, and we looked at the cost of doing that. It would be fairly nominal for us to do that, and I think that that would be a considerate thing to do for those members of our school district who might not regularly see the Olathe News.
Could we understand what fairly nominal means?
A couple of comments. First of all, on the, I looked, based on talking to Gary, designating an official newspaper, the kinds of items that would be there, that then must be published there would be budget, elections, bond information, and I think that's notice of hearings. And I think last year, that total amount of money was around $1,000 for those official pieces. Now, we want to make sure that everybody understands that in all cases, whether it's the Olathe News, the Olathe Sun, the Kansas City Star, all information about board meetings, all notices regarding change of board meetings, information about board meetings, all of that is always done with all three papers as we communicate with our public. So, I want to make the distinction between the official notification and what we would be required to do by designating the paper. I think from a financial point of view, if we, and I have to qualify this minute, if the board were to designate more than one official paper, one thing I would want that subject to, I have not talked to Mike Norris about that, and I would want that subject to the fact that that could be done in some priority order, but it would cost about an additional $1,000 or so a year to have more than one paper publishing our notices related to elections and budgets and hearings.
It would seem prudent, the thing to do, to make sure that we clarified that with our legal counsel before we took action on that, to make sure that we didn't have to undo something that we did. So, I would feel more comfortable tabling that suggestion. I think it's a suggestion that has merit. We have talked many times at our study sessions about the difficulties that we have communicating to a community of over 100,000 now, as well as over 25,000 students. And how we do that in the future continues to be a challenge, and if this would help us in that challenge, that would be appropriate. But I certainly wouldn't want to take action on that without learning from legal counsel that it was appropriate and legal for us to have two official publications.
It would seem to me that perhaps we take action on what's proposed in our agenda, and then, if we have the opportunity to expand that after consulting with legal counsel, we could take that action at the August meeting.
That, we have some items coming up surrounding budget, budget workshops and those kinds of things. The budget workshop is published in more than one paper. That's not a hearing? Gary?
I believe, well, it goes along with what you said a while ago, from the perspective that all kinds of meetings that we have at the district are sent out through community relations to all the different publications. Yes?
I just want to make sure that for public notifications and whatever, that we're doing what we need to do under statute. And if the board wants to designate an additional paper, and we can, that would be an option that the board could do and go ahead and designate a paper tonight, and then, see if you want to add a paper. That's one option for the board.
Once again, just so I understand clearly what would be gained by doing that?
The only gain that I would see, and Dr. All, you could chime in on this, if we're paying for the public notice, we're assured that it's going to be in the additional newspaper. Now, we don't have that assurance, other than if they feel free to publish what we send them.
Thank you.
I think that's the intent behind the statute, that you designate a specific paper, and you pay for that so you know it's published. All right. With that, Ms. Ashley, are you comfortable putting that back on the agenda, in the consent agenda?
Yes. I think that is a reasonable way to approach it.
Okay.
Appreciate that suggestion.
All right. Any other questions on any other consent agenda items? I just realized something. If you and I are abstaining from this, there are no officers to lead this motion when we go to approve that thing we're pulling off, so we'd have to, you would have to designate somebody.
I have a suggestion on that.
Okay.
Do I have a suggestion?
We hope you do.
Because I looked at that, it won't work. I was thinking where we could do two votes. You would be here for one, and Ms. Ashley would be here for the other. That won't work. Can't vote twice on the issue, so.
Well, the protocol says if either of the board officers are present, the remaining board members can appoint someone to oversee the meeting. So, I think you can just vote on somebody to lead that vote, and we'll step out and then come back in.
Do we have to vote? Do we need to vote on that?
Yes.
For somebody to vote, lead that issue?
Yes, you would.
Okay.
There's four of you left, so you all need to agree. So, if that, we'll entertain a motion for the, through the consent agenda minus item four point, or 5.08 on the approval of banking institutions.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Pollan. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Dr. Daniels. Any further discussion on the motion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Mr. Gilmore?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Ms. Ashley?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
And the consent agenda is approved minus item 5.08. So, with that, Ms. Ashley and I will excuse ourselves, and we'll leave it in your capable hands to appoint someone to oversee that next action item.
I think we need, I think we need a motion on that, don't we? Ms. Carpenter, for somebody to?
I think so.
Okay. I'd move that Mr. Pollan would lead the discussion on the 5.08 in the consent agenda.
Second.
Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Okay. We're at, action item 5.08 is up for discussion. Is there any discussion?
I think for the purposes of the public and the audience, 5.08 is the action item to approve financial institutions that would be idle fund bidders for district funds. And I believe that's, we're just approving them as having the right to bid, not approving that they have the right for the funds. They just, if we have idle funds available and we send that out on RFP, is that it? And then, the banks, then the financial institutions can bid on that, and then, we select, then the staff selects the best bid for the funds. Is that correct? So, we're not allowing anyone to have the money now. They just, this is just saying they have the right to bid on it.
Correct. Any other discussion?
I would move for approval of the list of financial institutions as presented in consent agenda 5.08 for approval.
Second.
Do I hear any other discussion?
Mr. Churchman?
Yes.
Dr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Parker?
Yes.
Mr. Pollan?
Yes.
Thank you all. We're on to item six, action item related to bids, contracts, and agreements. Are there any items in that section which you have questions or comments on?
Mr. Gilmore would like to talk about 6.01, 6.04, and 6.06.
I'd like to, I need to pull 6.01 from the agenda for possible conflict of interest again.
All right.
Excuse myself, and then I'd like to discuss 603.
Okay. Mr. Churchman, you mentioned 6.01 first. Why don't we start with that one?
Excuse me, if Mr. Paul is going to recuse himself, then we probably should discuss that with Mr. Poland out of the room.
Good point, Mr. Parker. We'll wait for that. 6.03, I believe, is the next one.
Just a question, as far as, after five years, it says that the property, the cameras become the property of laid law. At the end of five years, I'm sure some cameras are still good. Does this give them an advantage if, in future contracts?
Mr. Dean, are you going to deal with this topic?
The, that discussion was very complicated, and it went back and forth many different ways, and so I appreciate you bringing that to our attention, because it is something that we spend a lot of time with. In the contract, one of the things that we wanted to make sure, that there was a very clear understanding of who is responsible for maintaining them on a day-to-day basis. And that, as we looked at our responsibilities there, we knew that that was probably a possibility. And so one of the things that they're agreeing to at no additional charge is that they are going to pay for the warranty that expands, extends the coverage of the cameras throughout the five-year period, and then are going to be responsible on a day-to-day basis of replacing them, fixing them, maintaining them. If they change a bus out that goes, that they bring in a newer bus without a camera, that they'll be switching it back and forth, so they're responsible for all of that. In lieu of that, the idea was that we were going to look at a camera and a system that would have a lifetime, that coincided somewhat with the lifetime of our contract. And so, in essence, we fully believe probably, yeah, I could have said that better, that they're going to last longer than five years, but we would be giving that up if in the next contract renewal, it would be determined that we went with another company. So that is something that we would be giving up.
Thank you. 6.04.
The same question for 04 and 06, the budgeted amount for those items, please.
Good evening. For 6.04, which is the 3D printers, the budgeted amount was $29,100. The research that we had done and identified as being a printer that would be acceptable for use, that was the pricing that we found. However, when we bid the item out, there was also a cleaning station that needed to be a part of that package that we hadn't identified in the pricing, and that's why there was a change from our bid amount to the amount that we finally accepted. So that was on 604. On 6.06, which are secondary lunch beverages, that's a general fund item, a food production item, so there was not a budgeted amount that we'd established for that.
Good, thank you.
Any other questions in section six? If not, we'll entertain a motion to approve minus item 6.01.
I move that we accept bids, contracts, and agreements, with the exception of 6.01.
Thank you, Ms. Ashley. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Churchman. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Poland.
Yes.
Mr. Churchman.
Yes.
Ms. Ashley.
Yes.
Dr. Daniels.
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore.
Yes. And the motion passes. Mrs. Carpenter, please note for the record that Mr. Poland is excusing himself from the meeting, and will take into consideration item 6.01 related to trade bids for service center addition. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Thomason, just, I believe we have a typo here that should read 2003 bond funds, is that correct, instead of 2007?
That's correct. It was just a typo.
Very good, thank you.
If there's no other questions or comments, we'll entertain a motion to approve, please.
I move that we approve the trade bid for the service center addition.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ashley and Mr. Parker. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Mr. Poland. Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Churchman.
Yes.
Ms. Ashley.
Yes.
Dr. Daniels.
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
And that motion carries. Would you please ask Mr. Poland to rejoin us? Other action items in section seven, the first deals with meeting dates, locations, and times for our school year. You'll see those listed in your agenda. We'll need to take action on those. One of the things I wanted to point out, we also listed a regular meeting for July of 2008, which we don't seem to ever always focus on July, we just focus through June, but July tends to be a challenge, so we're trying to get ahead of the curve there, if you will. Dr. All, we'll include that in this motion, even though that's next business year. I guess it wouldn't hurt to do that. We're going to set all these dates. Yeah, okay. So as you look to that list, please remember we're including that July 2008 meeting date on the 17th.
You might note also the designating January 10th as the second Thursday of the month, because that first Thursday's also been an issue as far as how to schedule that, so that hopefully would allow everybody to plan for their time. So those were two suggestions.
Even if we named July 17, 2008, as our regular meeting date for organization, we would be able to modify that at some point in time in the future, based upon schedules.
We have the ability to modify any of this. We just have to come up with a slate. Is that correct, Mrs. Carpenter?
I think that, yes.
Yes. If there's no other discussion, we'll entertain a motion to approve as presented. There is a proposed form of resolution in our materials. I hope you've seen that.
So is the motion a motion to accept the resolution to establish regular meeting dates?
Use the language and the recommendation on the agenda.
Okay, I move to approve a resolution to set the dates, time, and location for the regular monthly Board of Education meetings for 2007, 2008, and also the July 2008 meeting.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Mr. Churchman.
Yes.
Ms. Ashley.
Yes.
Dr. Daniels.
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Poland.
Yes.
And that motion passes. Item 7.02 is an appointment of board representative to the Olathe Public Schools Foundation Board, which Ms. Ashley has been our representative the last two years.
I have served on the foundation board. I think I've lost track of the number of years, but that's okay, because I have a great passion for the foundation. I haven't lost interest in the foundation. However, I think that it would be a good idea for another board member to get familiar with the foundation and all of the great things and the terrific opportunities that we have through the foundation. The meeting time is delicate for some folks' working schedules. I have spoken with Dr. Daniels. She's expressed an interest in serving on the foundation board and has indicated that the meeting schedule would work with her work schedule. So if she is still agreeable to serving on the foundation board, I would like to recommend Dr. Debbie Daniels as a liaison to the Olathe Public Schools Foundation.
Would you like to make that recommendation a motion?
Sure. I move that Dr. Debbie Daniels be designated as the Board of Education liaison to Olathe Public Schools Foundation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Ms. Ashley.
Yes.
Dr. Daniels.
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Poland.
Yes.
Mr. Churchman.
Yes.
The motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Daniels, for being willing to serve in that capacity. 7.03 is appointment of head start advisory board representative. I have served in this role for the past two years and would be happy to do so again, but I wanted to clarify, as I said a few months ago, this would have to be my last year, because I believe the rules are that you only have three years, even if they're not consecutive, serving in this capacity. So if there's someone else wanting to do it, you're welcome to it. I'm happy to do it another year, but we would have to find someone different next year.
Mr. Gilmore, I did serve in that capacity before, and I'm disappointed that I cannot do it again. It's an excellent opportunity to work with young parents and young families who sometimes aren't represented in some of our bigger decisions, and so I would encourage board members to consider that.
Mr. Gilmore, I'd be pleased to serve on that position.
I would move that Mr. Churchman be our representative for the head start advisory board.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Ms. Ashley.
Yes.
Dr. Daniels.
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Poland.
Yes.
Mr. Churchman.
Yes.
That motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Churchman, for serving in that capacity, and I would echo everything that Dr. Daniels has said. It's a wonderful group. Section eight deals with future action items. We have a number of things that are listed there, student trips, curriculum items, anything there you have a question on that you might want to ask of staff or work, additional information you'd like to see before next month. Same question for section nine, dealing with written reports. See, we have textbook instructional materials budget. This calendar of events coming up this next month with the opening of the new school year. It's always a busy and exciting time. Okay, if there are no questions or comments related to those items, we're on to our final agenda item, which is an executive session. You'll see the proposed motion there on the agenda. I will tell you, Dr. All indicates we probably would need about 45 minutes for this session. So we would probably look to move until 8:30 into executive session.
Mr. President, I move to recess to executive session to discuss personnel matters of non-elected personnel, to protect the privacy interests of the individuals to be discussed, and for preliminary discussion relating to the acquisition of real property, to protect the public interest in obtaining the property, and to consult with attorney on matters deemed privileged in attorney-client relationship, to protect attorney-client privilege in the public interest, to return to regular session at 8:30 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Poland. Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Parker. Mrs. Carpenter.
Dr. Daniels.
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Poland.
Yes.
Mrs. Churchman.
Yes.
Ms. Ashley.
Yes.
And the motion carries, and we are adjourned to executive session until 8:30 p.m. Okay, Mrs. Carpenter, let the record reflect, we've returned from executive session. We have one more action item to consider, and that we've been presented with contracts for the purchase of future elementary school site, and we would need a motion to approve those contracts.
I move that we accept the contracts as presented for the acquisition of a future elementary school site.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Poland. Any further discussion? Mrs. Carpenter.
Dr. Daniels.
Yes.
Mr. Gilmore.
Yes.
Mr. Parker.
Yes.
Mr. Poland.
Yes.
Mr. Churchman.
Yes.
Ms. Ashley.
Yes.
And the motion carries. We have no further agenda items, so we are adjourned. Thank you all for a good meeting tonight.